Okay, good evening and welcome to the regular council meeting of Monday, June 12th, 2017. This time can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocic.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Pastor Lauren Gregory of the Victory Assembly of God, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we pray that you'd give us wisdom and grace tonight, Lord, as we make the business of the people. Father, bless us and help us remember who we're doing it for, and just let your grace rain down on us. May I ask this, Lord, in your holy name? Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one presentation this evening. It's a proclamation declaring June 2017 as Disability Awareness Month. I think Carolyn Texera? Great. So I have a proclamation here. I'll read it. Proclamation of the City of Series proclaiming June 2017 as Disability Awareness Month. Whereas the city council of the City of Series have recognized healthy communities as a priority, and whereas disabilities can affect all people regardless of race, age, gender, or social status, and the essence of life is not embodied by physical or mental perfection, but is an integral part of the human spirit. And whereas increasing public awareness about diverse abilities is vital to fighting the stigma and discrimination that often serve as a barrier to employment, socialization, and individual well-being. And whereas there are an estimated 4,158,400 people with disabilities in the state of California, and over 70,640 people over the age of five with disabilities in Stanislaus County. Whereas, within the next year, at least one out of eight Californians will experience a disability personally or through a family member. And whereas the City of Series wants to celebrate and recognize people with different abilities, and people with different abilities are independent, productive, and part of our community. And whereas education, understanding, access engagement, and relationships are important components of a connected, livable, and healthy community. And whereas communities thrive when residents appreciate the unique gifts inside people of all abilities. And by developing relationships with our neighbors, we make our community a place where everyone participates and is a valued member. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the city council of the City of Series that June 2017 is Disability Awareness Month within the City of Series, and we urge all our citizens to become aware of the needs and capabilities of persons with disabilities. Proclaim this 12th day of June 2017.
City council members. City of Series, on behalf of the over 70,000 people in Stanislaus County with a disability, thank you. For six years, we have declared June, or you have declared June, as Disability Awareness Month, and we're thrilled that you continue to do this and bring awareness. Here at the Society for Disabilities, we're currently celebrating our 70th year. A lot of people think we're the best-kept secret. I like to think that we're still getting our message out and that we create smiles. Smiles happens at our prom or any of our adaptive sports program, not just on the faces of our participants, but on the faces of the participants' families, too. Mainly because parents who have a child with a disability never think that their child's going to get to play Miracle League baseball, or go to the prom, or get to go water skiing. But yet, they do through the Society for Disabilities because we believe in what the ability is. And just in case you're wondering, when we give people, loan people a wheelchair, or a walker, or a hospital bed, they smile, too. And thank you again for doing this. We will hang the proclamation very proudly on our wall. And here in this month, on our Facebook page, if you'd like to like our Facebook page, we are bringing to attention disability etiquette tips. Sometimes people forget, even if you're talking to a deaf person, you don't talk to the interpreter. You talk to the deaf person, just like when you talk to any person with a disability, and you always ask if they need help versus just helping. Because disability, a person with a disability also wants to be an independent person. So please consider accessibility, employment, and what we do best is create smiles. And trust me, you are creating smiles when you help someone with a disability. Thank you all so much, and you have a great day.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll move to citizens communication to council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless this is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Dave Pratt of Series. Sometime back, I talked to the planning commission, and Modesto's going to allow electronic billboards, and I thought maybe Series might be interested in looking into that also. I see they, nonprofit, basically, the money that they get from the fireworks booth is what they use all year to support the community. And every year, the prices go up, and I'd like to know why, what we're going to get for the $100 that you're increasing that part of it. You're going to get to the point where nonprofits not going to be able to do fireworks booths here in this town. The only one that's going to be doing anything in the community is the Lions Club. I see they took it, and I see they took out the telephone cable box again at Whitmore and Moore Road. And the way it looks like, they didn't hit the barriers, but they hit the box. And it looks like they didn't even, they must have been going pretty fast because they didn't even like, like they'd even put their brakes on until halfway across Whitmore. If one you build over there and you widen Moore Road, you're going to have worse issues. My suggestion is you need to put a couple of speed bumps over there, or put the road dots in there, maybe that might give them a hint that they need to stop. As far as, I hope Wells doesn't expect now as Choo Choo is going to put Series on the map, but I see Ace Train is on schedule. Looks like we're going to wind up getting them. People, he's going up on everything, and you wonder why people moving to California don't bother to change their driver's license or their plates? And why you see more cars on the road that's got expired tags, and a lot of people that's got expired driver's licenses just driving around? It's getting to the point, it's getting too expensive to drive in California. I hope Ace Train makes it through here because I'd like to take that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Okay, with that, we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have one item, Measure H Committee Discussion. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. The Measure H Committee is the oversight committee that was appointed with the passage of Measure H back in 2007. We have two members whose term ends on June 30th. Both of those members have expressed an interest that they would like to continue to serve on the Measure H Committee. However, it does require appointment from the council to do that. Past practice is the council has expressed an interest in reappointing folks. However, the ordinance does indicate, you know, shall solicit committee members through an open application process, so I'm looking for council direction of how you'd like to proceed with the filling of those two spots. Again, the two current folks are interested in serving. The bylaws indicate that they can serve for two consecutive three-year terms. They're at the end of their first three-year term, so I'm looking for council direction of how you'd like to move forward with that application process. I see two potential options. One, put on the next agenda, or actually, you could do it on this meeting, to appoint those folks to the Measure H for the next three years. Or you could, we can open up a process to solicit applications, I would just ask how long you would like that process to occur, so you give us direction so we can move forward on that.
Okay. Councilmember Rhino?
Well, I think, given the ordinance states we'll solicit through an open application process, I think we should. Because even though it does say they will be appointed and can serve no more than two consecutive three-year terms, I think if the intent was that they serve concurrently, it should have been worded in the ordinance as such.
Okay. Any other comments? Just one question that I would ask is, are we going to allow the two applicants to apply, or would we say no?
Well, of course. Of course you can, I think. They should be able to apply as well. But I think we need to also open it up in case there's someone else that is interested in the community that wants to be on it.
Okay. And then, and I hear you, I understand that, because, so that would be, go back to my next question, is if we're going to, if we're going to choose somebody, because I'm assuming that the two candidates are doing a good job right now. That's what, I haven't heard anything to the negative.
Yes, from a staff perspective, they've satisfied their duties and continued to do a very fair job.
So if someone else wants to come in and we want to give them an opportunity, then why wouldn't we just say, you can't reapply?
Well, then maybe we need to change our ordinance and say that we're willing to keep them, anyone that is on the committee now, for two consecutive terms. Because we shouldn't have, to me, we shouldn't say that we're going to do an open application process if that is exclusive of new, of new term.
I agree, I agree with you. I kind of see that as two separate things. I mean, we can, we can change it if we want. I'm just posing the question, so if someone new applied for that position, we would, we would not appoint one of the two, or both of them, if there were two?
Well, I think, I think just to be fair, you do your interviews like we're supposed to, and you choose the ones that are best for the position. That's what the whole intent of the application is, right?
Okay.
The ordinance does not have a requirement for an interview process. It just says the council will appoint, so.
But in past, we have interviewed.
We have used an interview process, the last time we did because of the number of applicants. But again, the appointment process is not specified in the ordinance, it just says the open selection.
Seems like we just appointed them.
How many years ago was it?
Three years ago.
We did, except we had new ones, and then we opened it up for applicants. Yeah.
So what's the will of the council? Didn't we just appoint, though, in the past as well, without doing an interview?
Well, it also depends on the number of applicants. So if, you know, if we've got two openings and only two applicants, then it's a straight appointment.
But we never just appointed. We just, like, there was these two people that had another two-year term they could have served, and we just didn't appoint.
No, we have done that.
We did.
We have done that, yes.
We've done all of the above.
Yeah, we've done it about each particular direction.
I would just say if they're doing a good job, let them have another two years.
About three.
Three years.
Another option, as I mentioned, would be to open up for a shorter window, a week or two, and move rather relatively quickly through the process would be another option.
I just want to make sure that if we go through that process that we vet it, because I don't want to waste people's time if we ultimately are going to reappoint the two that are doing it if we think they're doing a good job. You know, we had this same discussion when it became Planning Commission, and the people applied for the Planning Commission, but yet we reappointed the people on the Planning Commission because we were going through the general plan update, and we want to change people midstream. You know, I do agree with Councilmember Rhino as far as, we do have this thing in place that we should open it up for applications, but on the other hand, the standard practice for the council and previous councils before I was here is to reappoint them till their term limits are up. So, you know, I think what we need to do is readjust our ordinance to reflect that they're eligible for two terms, and if anybody doesn't want to apply for a second term, then we can open it up for applications. Because, you know, these two, right now, that are on there, were appointed because the previous Measure H Committee members termed out. And so we did open it up for the applicants. So I think that we need to readjust our ordinance, saying they're allowed to have, you know, two consecutive terms, and if they don't, we open it up for applications. Okay. Councilor Lane?
Yeah. I don't know that the ordinance doesn't say that they can't run two consecutive terms. I think what we should do is leave it at the council's discretion because there may be somebody in there that hasn't done a good job. So I would say that if you're going to do anything with the ordinance, I would say, you know, either/or, but it should be the council's discretion, because if we say, you know, two years, and you can go ahead, if you apply, it's yours again if you want to be that. Well, it could be that maybe somebody hasn't done a good job there, and maybe, you know, haven't attended meetings, or have been combative, whatever the case may be, that we wouldn't want them back on there. So if there's going to be an ordinance change, I mean, I basically have no problem with either one of these individuals, and I think ultimately, the end result would be what it is. We'd be appointing them. But if it's going to be change in the ordinance, I'd like to see it and bring this back, if it's going to happen, bring it back, and leave it to the council's discretion, either/or, in the ordinance, Toby. I don't know, see what I'm trying to say there? And then, you know, at that time, when it comes, if we say, prior to appointing anybody, we say, hey, the people, get a staff report, they've done a good job, you know, we're recommending a staff to move forward with them, then we can have that discretion at that time. Otherwise, I think it kind of ties the council's hands. I'd rather see it open and be able to be at our discretion on how we want to do it, if the ordinance is going to be changed.
Okay, so if I'm hearing correctly, that we want to change the ordinance, that's what I'm hearing. How do we want to handle these two? I don't have a problem taking applications, or I don't have a problem reappointing them. You know, I mean, we could have a situation where, and you just brought it up, Councilmember Lane, I hadn't stopped to think about it the last time with this, but we could have one of those longstanding people now reapply, and they have more experience than the current ones, and, you know, by default, you could say they're more qualified. I, you know, and that's fine, but I don't have a problem with the way the two that are appointed right now are doing. So I can go either way. You, I'll do whatever the council would like to do. And I hear Councilmember Rhino, the way that it's written, I agree with you, you know, we probably should go that route and then correct it, but again, I just, I don't want to go down the process and then ultimately end up with the same two we have, and we brought other people in, and they thought that there was an opportunity, and we said, well, these people are still doing great. You know, if that's the case, then let's just appoint them now.
I would just say we appoint the two. And then any changes we need to make as time goes on. I mean, we're pretty busy right now with the general plan update and other things that the city's got going on, but, and again, I'll do whatever you guys want to do, but if we get eight people that apply, and like you said, say there's some people on it that were in the past, you know.
People that were on it before couldn't apply, could they? People that were on it before couldn't apply because they'd already done their two consecutive? Yes.
Yeah, we had the discussion, the people could set off one and come back. So they could, all of the people that didn't make it last time could come back on.
Okay.
So.
That turned out.
That turned out, correct. Because it's like it starts all over again. So we have one that says, appoint as is. Linda would like to, or Councilmember Rhino would like to solicit.
No, I'll go along with the appoint, if we can change the ordinance later.
Okay.
I'll agree.
All right. So then let's go ahead and reappoint the two, and then change the ordinance.
Tom, is, with the way we agendize it, Measure H Committee Discussion, is that enough, or do we need to bring that back for the actual appointment?
We'll need to bring that back.
Okay, we'll bring that back in the next meeting for the appointment. Just a clarification on the ordinance, you only want to clarify this process of reappointment, or would you like a little more language in there for any appointment?
I would say any appointment.
Okay. Just, like.
And maybe it's something along the lines that we do in our election, where if, you know, it's up and they don't file a paper by a certain period of time.
Build the date in.
Then it's the solicitation, if they're still within the terms of the length that they can serve.
Right. It says, right now, the language says, the city council shall solicit citizens oversight committee members through an open application process. So a simple change would be may, you know, change the shall to a may, and at the council's discretion, depending on the circumstances of the, you know, a incumbent, or something along those lines. So I could clarify for this particular one, are you just wanting, I just want to make sure I get the right intent? You want to clarify for this particular case where we're looking at appointing somebody for their second term, or a little more broad language to handle any situation?
Vice Mayor Klein?
Well, and you're talking about changing the word to may, the other discrepancy in there is, you can do two consecutive terms, you can set out for one term and then reapply.
That's actually not in the ordinance, that's actually in the bylaws.
So they can in the bylaws?
Well, the bylaws just simply state that no committee member can serve, let me get the language just to make sure. I believe the bylaws simply state, no committee member may serve more than, no committee, just simply states, no committee member may serve more than two consecutive three-year terms.
Well, that's in the ordinance as well. No member may serve more than two consecutive three-year terms. It's in section B, the third paragraph, I think. Third paragraph?
Correct.
I mean, the second paragraph.
Yeah, so it is in both locations.
But I think that's where we need to clarify somehow that they.
Once you've served two consecutive terms, you cannot be back on the committee.
Well, I think I want it to be clear that we aren't going, after the first time that their term expires, that we aren't going to automatically go out for, go out for applications, that they are able to serve two consecutive three-year terms, you know, if the council determines that or something prior to soliciting applications.
You would like to see us include language to handle the situation we're dealing with right now?
Yeah, something along the lines that says, if notification a month prior to theirs, that they are interested in staying on, and that the council, you know, is okay with their past performance, then they have the ability to be reappointed for.
Without an open application process.
If they don't want to, and they don't submit anything, then obviously that triggers us to go out there. And when they get through their second term, it's a moot point. They can't apply anyway, so.
Okay, perfect.
Next, we will move on to conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items or public hearing items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be acted, excuse me, accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like any of the consent calendar items pulled for further discussion? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like a consent calendar pulled for further discussion? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the council for direction. Move to adopt, one, two, three, three, eight, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocic.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening. Public hearing, we have one item, item nine, with five parts, A, B, C, D, and E. It's a public hearing to consider adopting the annual budget for the City of Series for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, this evening, my pleasure to present our proposed budget for fiscal year 1718. As we discussed a little over a month ago, or less than a month ago, at our workshop, we have now done the work necessary to present a budget that meets the criteria and the conditions that you established as part of that workshop on May 15th. So again, these are updated numbers from the last time we spoke, reflecting where we expect, or where we're forecasting, projecting to end the fiscal year 1617, be the year end June 30th, 2017. So again, our beginning balance, 4.3 million, our revenue's projected at 18.4, expenditures 18.6, leaving a fund balance of 4.1 million, approximately 22% of expenditures. As the council may recall, the forecast when we approved this budget a year ago was that we would hit 18%. However, due to a couple things, one, revenues coming in pretty darn close to what we had forecast, again, thanks to very fine forecasting efforts by Ms. Dean and her team. Our projected expenses have come in well below estimate, which is the primary reason. One of those significant differences on the expenditure side of things is the fact that we had some vacancies, especially in public safety, which have allowed us to save some funds there, that allows us to come in under budget on the revenue, on the expense side. So again, these final numbers, you know, don't get finalized until September, October, and the final audit won't come back to council until after the beginning of 2018. But again, projections tracking relatively close to where we were this time last year, and again, the closer we get to the end of the year, the more accurate our numbers get. Same, same kind of overview here of our overall fiscal picture for fiscal year 1718. Still challenge, our revenues are growing, we are seeing increases there, but at a slower pace than the expenditures. We're seeing, you know, a couple of those key items increasing pretty significantly with our retirement costs, workers' compensation, and health insurance, and those items continue to be a driver, and increasing faster than our revenues. Same chart that I've showed before, just updated to reflect the numbers in the draft budget. So you notice there, that last red and blue line for the 2017-18 draft budget now reflects the numbers that are included in the budget. You'll recall from the last time, the red line was a little higher than the blue line, reflecting the budget that we were showing you on May 15th, and this has now been updated to reflect that information. Same information here, again, just updated, showing the difference between the salaries and benefits and the other classifications of expenditures across the organization. Again, this is focused just on the general fund. This is also updated information showing, this chart is just showing, you know, those line items that were increased pretty significantly between what we're forecasting to end fiscal year 1617 and what the budgeted line item for fiscal year 1718. So you can see those categories there, what the drivers are for the increased expenditures that we're expecting for fiscal year 1718. So that information rolls up into the forecast, this is the information that was in your packet, showing kind of where we finished the previous three years. You know, as this council recalls, we've approved a budget that will, would take us down to as low as 18%, but through a number of circumstances and staff managing the budgets very well, we've been able to stay well above that minimum floor that the council has set of 18%. And you can see 1415, we finished at 25%, 25.7, 23, 22, and again, forecasting with this budget per year direction to, in essence, deficit spend about $500,000, it would take us down to that floor of 18%. As we look forward into the future, projections for 1819 and the things that may change, we do have a pretty good idea of what our retirement costs were, so that's built into kind of that projection. The salaries, again, would change only with negotiations. We have built a slight increase in there of about 2% to reflect the step increases that were required for those employees that are eligible. The workers' comp has a 10% factor built in, that's the one we probably know the least about, and it's volatility of how that goes up over time is. The workers' comp has a ten percent factor built in, that's the one we probably know the least about, and its volatility of how that goes up over time is pretty difficult to forecast. The health insurance, we're showing that is static on the city's side because for the most part, we're at the max contribution for the city. So any increase in the health insurance would likely be borne by the employees, unfortunately. In the bottom line there, we do have all the other expenses that grouped into that category showing a two percent increase to kind of give you an idea of what the forecast looks going forward. And again, on the revenue side, that includes a four percent increase year over year. So overall, kind of the big picture changes that we made between the workshop on May fifteenth and, and today. No change on the Safer Grant, but just wanted to repoint out that the six firefighters included currently are funded only through March, and that is the, the term of the, the grant, and the budget does not include any additional funding for those positions after the, the end of the grant. Position changes, as we discussed, the dispatch supervisor was changed from a public safety supervisor to a more narrowed function of the dispatch supervisor, that's also included as a separate budget item for resolution to change that job description to reflect that specific job title, which again is a lower classification and a more narrowed function. Also made the change of freezing the crime analyst position in exchange for a new detective position, so that's a swap in that particular case. And the planning department, again, a separate budget, or separate agenda item for the council of reestablishing the senior planner position that we've had for a number of years, in essence, unfunding an associate and funding the senior planner position. And then where the, the primary savings in the budget comes from the freezing of these current vacant positions, fire captain, fire engineer, custodian, and administrative clerk. So those positions were all frozen and that's the line share.
Is a question.
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Rhino?
Is the detective a new police officer or is it a new assignment of an existing police officer?
It would be a new position.
A new, a new police officer?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question for the police chief then. Has SDEA been dismantled yet or is it going to be dismantled? Okay, and not to like put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. With, with SDEA out and we have all the additional stuff going on, not just in Series but across the country, will we have some, will we probably see more potentially crime because now that specific unit through the county has been disbanded? Is that, is that mostly, is that gang or is that mostly drugs and it all relates to gangs?
Um, large-scale drug operations. Again, cartel operations, so yes, I think it will increase, but I don't yet know what we're going to do with it.
Okay, so, but the drugs are related to cartels, which are gangs, or not?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, and I understand from our budget meeting that you run the organizational changes and that we do policy. But I wonder, given that we're going to be looking at potentially an increase in what I fear to be gang activity, with this new position, the detective, could we not do the dispatch supervisor and hire another police officer and actually form the street gangs unit again that we used to have? Because to me, that would benefit certainly more people in the community than a dispatch supervisor. And we have a lieutenant who's now doing the supervising, we have three lieutenants and a captain. So I don't understand why they can't continue to do that, and we put two more cops on the street that are specific for a, a gang task force or whatever it's called.
So.
I don't know who that question.
We haven't had anyone, we haven't had anyone in SDEA, assigned to SDEA for at least three years.
But do we have the benefit of SDEA or not?
Basically, we use it as an insurance plan in case there's any chemical spills or what have you from labs and so forth. So if we didn't pay into that and we had a large spill here, the city would have to pay for that, if that makes sense. So, yes, we do have them. I don't, and they, and they operate in the whole county. But they have been suffering lately as, just like this city, I mean, there's been minimal people assigned to SDEA. I'm hearing rumors that the sheriff's going to take it over. I don't know how that's going to work. We're going to meet tomorrow at two thirty at the sheriff's office to discuss that, so. And then to address the dispatch supervisor, okay, so I have eight full-time dispatchers, a twenty-four hour operation and, and, you know, I say they need a supervisor. The lieutenant is a manager, so it's different, he has several different assignments. So it's kind of difficult. We're putting a Band-Aid on something that, again, is, is very important to the patrol operations. If we don't have the dispatch function working properly, it affects everything that we do out on the street and the calls that we receive from the citizens as well.
And I would just add that the, the street crimes unit that we previously had, its function and its focus are, are very different than what we would want it to be today. As I sat down with, with Chief Smith and, and asked him, you know, what is the biggest need in your department in terms of staffing? And, and these are the two items at the top of the list. The dispatch position, dispatch supervisor position and another detective. So again, they run the operation of the police department, I rely on their expertise of what we need in the most effective way to deliver the services with the fiscal constraints that we have. Obviously, in a perfect world, we'd have more officers, right? We, we've frozen positions, we'd have more officers and do more, but we don't. And so we're trying to find the best use of those resources and we do feel that this is the best resources and expenditure of those resources for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Now, will that, may that change in future years? Absolutely, but for this year, based on the situation and the, the factors that we have in place with us today, we do feel that this is the most appropriate staffing level for the police department, given the constraints that we're under.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, any other questions on those positions? All right, so as we move on to Measure H, kind of the same overall structure for Measure H that we had last year, same allocation of police officers and firefighters, shifted the focus a little bit in the last couple of years to one-time expenditures, and you can kind of see the list there. Primarily focusing those one-time expenditures to keep personnel costs below the revenue, and I'll show you on the next slide, and use, in essence, the fund balance to fund those one-time expenditures. This information was presented to the Measure H Committee on June first, they did recommend approval of this on a unanimous vote. What we also saw this year that, that helped us and provided a little excess in this particular was increased revenues. And I mentioned last time, car sales was one of those things that really provided us a nice bump into Measure H revenues. And also some vacancies in the expenditure side of things allowed us to have a little more cushion in Measure H at the end of this current fiscal year, which allows us to have a little bit more of those one-time expenditures proposed for next year. So fiscal year seventeen eighteen is shown there in the yellow, you can see we're spending more than the, the revenue. We have two point nine million-ish versus three point two, about three hundred thousand dollars. Again, spending that balance to get to kind of break even is what they projected. We were projecting about the same expenditures last year, and again, the, the increased revenues and the decreased expenditures allowed us to have a little more cushion to continue that same approach in fiscal year seventeen eighteen.
So the ending balance that we saw at our May, May workshop was one thirty-four, four fifty-eight. But this one shows one thousand three eighty-eight?
Correct, those are the changes that we made to reflect all of the changes throughout between that meeting and this meeting.
Okay.
So just the overall summary of, of what this budget looks like, total expenditures nineteen point eight million. Personnel costs are seventy-three percent, or about fourteen point eight million of that nineteen point eight. With Measure H, if you add that revenue in, it's about twenty-three point two million dollars. Public safety obviously is the primary focus, clearly, of what we spend our money on. Eighty-two percent of the general fund in Measure H is spent on public safety. As we move forward, that's the overall budget, as we look forward for this fiscal year and, and the years to come. You know, here's the challenges that we see, as I mentioned, the Safer Grant and how to staff the fire department after that. The ongoing conversation with the other entities, as this body has directed me to do, will continue in the next several months. As we move forward, also the end of the redevelopment agency, the successor agency and that funding source will be winding down. We do not expect to have that revenue in the following year, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in fiscal year seventeen eighteen that we don't expect to have in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. But that is still subject to some question as to how that all winds down and how the successor agencies change from their current structure to ultimately a one entity that runs by the county, and we're not quite sure how that's going to shape up yet. So that's still something in process. Community center is a continuing concern and, and issue to be addressed. We, we continue to work in on that in the current year. As I mentioned earlier, the health insurance has continued increased costs that has some concerns. We're, we've, we've formed the employee committee that will be looking at some of the options that we have for the future. Hope to get some feedback this summer to be able to continue those negotiations as we look to find other options for our health insurance and hopefully find some savings in that overall effort. Our liability insurance, we are in a pooled RMA, risk management authority, that allows us to keep those costs as low as possible. However, we are looking at a retrospective adjustment, which is basically our prior claims history will come back to see an increase in the coming year. And those are, those are costs that we do expect to increase over time. Also, just a reminder, our lighting and landscape districts, our revenues for those districts are, are fairly well below the actual cost of providing those services, and we have a pretty cheap option for providing most of those landscape services through the Howard Training Center. So we are continuing to investigate ways to try and get those two things balanced. But likely to get that to be worked properly would require a two eighteen process, an increasing the assessment on those properties to get those revenues and expenditures balanced. So we're continuing to work on that as well. And just wanted to mention, this is a newer slide that I put in, just to reference, as Ms. Dean and I were talking this afternoon of, you know, the other parts of the budget that we don't spend much time on, where obviously we were focused on the general fund, but just big picture, you know, our, our real budget, total budget, seventy-two million dollars, sixty-five million of which is, is city appropriations and the other seven million of those successor agencies with the repayment of the bond proceeds. We also have, you know, our water and sewer funds, which are separate funds. Our, our water fund is looking healthy to start the year, but we have a number of large capital projects to address some water quality and some challenges on the water supply side of things that are built in for this current fiscal year. That will lower that fund balance down to around one point two million dollars at the end of this year, which is getting a little lower than we'd like to see. And as directed by this, this council, we will be starting the process of looking at increases in rates to fund the surface water project that is planned in the near future. The sewer fund has a very healthy balance and is growing, but there is plans within our sewer master plan for large capital improvements to provide treatment facilities for our sewer, for our long-term sustainability and providing wastewater disposal. So that's growing on purpose to fund those long-term improvements, and the fund balance believes around fourteen million dollars, is that right, Suzanne? Somewhere in that range, so. Healthy in that respect, but again, those monies, most of those monies are for long-term improvements. We do have a pretty significant capital improvement budget this year, around eleven million dollars. Darrell and his team will be very busy delivering a couple of those new funding sources, Measure L, the half-cent sales tax for transportation, as well as SB one on the local streets, providing those roadway improvements. So the engineering staff will be very busy trying to deliver those projects and the other capital projects that we have ongoing. For example, the Forest Street downtown project that is getting started this week. So with that, that ends my formal presentation. Again, we've got the, the three resolutions in front of the budget that are all kind of rolled up, we put them all together because they're all related. So if you have any specific questions on any of those items, we can address those now or look for any questions or comment. It is a public hearing, so we do need to open it up for public hearing.
Are there any questions of staff before I open it up to the public?
Do each one separately.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone like to speak on this item? Okay, saying that, I'll bring it back to the council for direction or further discussion.
Can we take each resolution separately?
Yeah, you need to, actually.
Tom?
For our purposes, we'd like to see a vote on each, each resolution.
I think with, just knowing that there's going to be a split vote on at least some, practically speaking, you'd have to take a separate vote.
Okay. Move to approve resolution twenty seventeen oh four seven?
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocic.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
No.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four one.
Move to approve two thousand seventeen oh forty-eight?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote?
Councilmember DeRocic.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Move to approve resolution number twenty.
Oh, oh, can we talk about this one first?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Want to move to the next one and come back to it?
No.
Can we do that?
Can we just talk about them in order?
It's fine, we'll just talk about it in order, it's okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. The resolution approving amendment number three, giving Toby a five percent increase. I would like to correct the staff report when it says, it, it appears that all of the council was in agreeance that there be a future increase in compensation was in order. As you know, that wasn't true. As far as for myself, I didn't agree to that. And the reason I didn't agree was because I didn't believe the city manager should get a pay raise when all of the other employees aren't getting a pay raise, and I still believe that. I don't think it's fair to the employees who haven't received pay raises in years that the city manager get one. And in fact, what I would like to see is the three hundred thousand from case, the case DA that is in this proposed budget, that we don't have the money, but we're anticipating it. I would rather not see that in this coming budget, and I would like to wait February or March when you would have the three hundred thousand. And if in fact it does, we actually do wind up with that, then I think we should try to give all of the employees, including the city manager, a raise. That's what I think. I think it should be kind of a bonus money that we've received, like other cities have received bonus dollars that, from developers, and I think that's how we should, we should view it. We shouldn't view it as throwing it into the budget to try and lessen what our reserve is going, or try to lessen what we're taking from the reserve. But I think we should wait till we have the money, and when we do have the money, if we do have it, then everyone gets a raise.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, and, and I view the five percent that Mr. Wells has here as a, a step, so to speak, a step increase. So I, I know we can't do that for all of the other groups, but if I'm hearing you correctly, are you saying that you would be supportive of that as well, freezing that?
Supportive of what?
Freezing a step?
No, but I also don't believe a city manager has a salary range or a step increase. They, when they're hired, they are hired for a certain dollar amount. Other employees, there's a range, there isn't a range for the city manager.
No, no. We haven't given him a raise in three years?
Well, when was the last time we gave employees the raise?
That's not, I mean.
No, to me, it is the same thing. It, it is the same thing.
We give step increases, don't we?
If somebody's topped out, they're not getting a step increase.
Okay, I, he's not topped out at his salary range, is he?
He is receiving the same thing he received when he was hired.
Okay, I, I, so I, I vehemently disagree with the logic that you have with that because I believe that, you know, someone who's been doing the job for three years who's not at it should be given an increase.
So employees that are topped out, that have been doing their job for three years, shouldn't they get an increase?
Is, is that a question?
Yeah, it is a question because to me, it, it, to me, it's the same thing.
I don't disagree.
Okay. So we're not giving employees any increases?
We, we, do we have a? Um, we, we, we haven't had that discussion yet.
Well, we haven't give them, given them any increase.
Like I said, we haven't had that discussion yet, and I thought we also had the discussion the other night about how we were gonna classify the money coming from Case Manufacturing.
I'm sorry?
I thought we had a decision as to how we were going to handle the money from Case Manufacturing the other evening when we had the study session.
Well, no, I didn't agree to that either.
I know, but you're making a recommendation to change that.
I'm suggesting that, yes.
Okay. So, okay, so it, so is that your motion that you would like to see that?
Well, I don't think my motion would pass. I mean, if they want to pass the other motion approving it, they can.
Well, I'm, I, I just heard that you, you had some changes, so I-
I do. So I guess I'd like to make a, a motion to adopt Resolution twenty seventeen zero four nine, not approving the Amendment Number Three.
And also to, if, I don't need to change your motion, but I also heard you said that you didn't agree with the statement in the staff report, so you want that changed as well?
Well, I don't think we can change a staff report, but can we change the staff report? It doesn't go with the minutes.
Well, I, I had a revision after I spoke to you that might be in order, if, if you would like.
Okay, sure.
And it basically said on April third, twenty seventeen, during a special closed session, council conducted the annual review of the city manager. The review of the performance of Mr. Wells over the course of the past two years was unanimously determined to be commendable, and then on a four-to-one vote with Councilmember Rhino dissenting, determined a future increase in compensation was in order.
That's fine.
Okay. So you have a motion. Do you, is there a second before I ask the questions, or are the questions related to the motion?
Questions are related to the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Klein?
Well, you know, I, I had a little discussion with this with Mr. Wells last week. You know, I was under the impression that we did, we did discuss his compensation. He hasn't got a raise in, in three years since he's taken over the position. Uh, you know, my, my train of thought was we discussed it, we discussed an amount, but we decided, you know, I thought as a council that we would table this until after we found out what the budget was gonna be, okay? And, you know, with further discussion and, and, you know, what, what Councilmember Rhino's brought up, you know, we did, if I, correct me if I'm, 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 I'm going in the wrong direction here, Mr. Wells, but the last budget, we did bring back step increases for our employees.
That was three years ago, I believe.
But we did bring back step increases.
Yeah, they were frozen-
Right, and we, we basically unfroze the step increases.
Well, you unfroze the step increases when you restored the employee concessions-
Right.
In twenty, with the fiscal year twenty fourteen, I believe, my first year as a city manager, right? Yeah, it was with that budget, September of twenty fourteen, when you removed the concessions.
The concessions were removed at that meeting, but we restored them January first.
January one of twenty fourteen, right?
Of twenty fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Twenty fifteen?
Yep, yep, fourteen, fifteen.
It was the fourteen, fifteen budget.
Correct.
So if an employee was up for a step increase, then it went through the review process, and it went from there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, I mean, we haven't done any compensation for the city manager since he took the position.
That's actually not correct.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. I'm just trying to-
I was hired in twenty fourteen at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
In twenty fifteen, you conducted my first annual view per the contract, and you did grant me a five percent step increase. Last year, review was not conducted, and no review was, and no step was, or no increase was granted. This year, per evaluation, it was completed in April. Council agreed, or at least a majority agreed, to provide that. It was included in the budget only after we were insured, per the mayor's direction, that we were meeting the criteria that council directed to meet the eighteen percent.
And, and generally speaking, step increases are three, five percent? What is, what's the range?
Generally speaking, for all employees other than the city manager, it's five, five percent step increases. Public safety is a little bit different. They have a sixth.
Okay.
Councilmember Lane?
You know what? Go ahead on this. I just have a comment about this, but-
You, you're done? Okay. So you don't have no?
Nothing on this motion. I have a comment.
Okay. Okay, so we have Councilmember Rhino's motion on the floor. Is there a second? Okay, hearing none, that motion will die. I will entertain another motion.
Move to approve number twenty seventeen zero four nine?
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Count.
Oh, I'm sorry. You'd like to comment now?
I would, yeah.
Okay.
Before we take-
Okay.
You know, going back to when we took concessions, ten percent rose, rose steps and all that sort of thing. Our city manager at that time, Brad Keldger, set from this very dais and took twenty percent. Actually, he took ten, then he took another ten percent. Twenty percent cut he took at that time. When we gave back the concessions, we gave back ten percent plus the step increases. I don't really remember any step increases with city managers and that sort of thing. Maybe that's how we handled this on Toby's contract. I can't remember at this point, but I know that where Toby sits today, he's well below where Brad was, when Brad gave his twenty percent at that time. So I have really, you know, I've, I've gotten several phone calls. I don't really see this as a raise. I see it as giving a concession back, and really not to where he was. And Mayor, you were correct in saying we have to get to this eighteen percent, and staff has done that, and there's other things that staff is working on to improve that even more to where we will be able to, hopefully, before I'm off this council, which is another year, be able to, in next contract or negotiations throughout the year, be able to see to where we can give some money and, and, and then raise this back to some of our employees, if not all of them. But I really don't struggle with this that much, just because of the statement I just made, knowing full well that when we go out and I look at other city managers and throughout the county, smaller cities making more than our city manager, who has, by the way, full services that he oversees, meaning police, fire, water and sewer, so. So I really have no issues with this, and Toby, you've done a great job for us, and I think, overall, you know, your goal is to see our employees be happy and to, in the end, be able to provide raises to all them too. So, and I know you're working hard in your office every day to do that. So with that said, that's just a comment I'd just like to make.
I, I'm gonna piggyback that. I mean, I completely agree a hundred percent in regards to, you know, what, what Toby's done, and the, the dollar figure. Now, just, just a question. I, I know that we've had three city managers since I've been on, Brad Keldger, Art Duarte, and then, uh, Mr. Wells here, and what if for some reason we had to go search for a city manager? Say that there was a job, say, say he's gone. What's the cost to find somebody, sorry, what's the cost to go find somebody to be your city manager? A lot of money, isn't it? Fifty thousand? Ever take?
Usually they, I've had headhunters call, offering up employees to come to work for me. An employee that they were offering at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we had to pay a thirty thousand dollar fee, plus a percentage of their salary for the first year.
Right, and then, just say, for example, one of these days, he's not, we're gonna have to hire one. I get it, right? Everything changes. What would that incoming person be worth? Probably more, we'd have to pay more than what we're giving.
Correct, that is correct.
You know, I, I, I'm good with this, and, you know, I think he's gonna continue on, push forward in regards to hopefully get our, our people more money, and hopefully the revenues come back a little faster, and this case thing is very important for our city, and I believe full-hearted in, in that and, and Mr. Reynolds. So I made the motion.
I know he seconded it. Okay, and just a couple of comments that I wanted to make along these lines is, I, I do want to put things into perspective here. You know, obviously, I, I understand some of the council members and, and, and it being a matter of principle, but the five percent we're talking about is four hundred and nine dollars a month, okay? When we're looking at a one point two million dollar budget deficit, let's kind of put things in perspective a little bit. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes four one.
Anyone want to take the next item?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Got it.
You got it.
Item D, Resolution Number two thousand seventeen five oh, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
No.
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes three two.
Move to approve Resolution Number twenty seventeen zero five one?
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes fi- four one.
Okay, we have no new business this evening. Discussion items, I do not believe we have any council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing none. Reports, I have nothing to report this evening. Councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lane?
Just to remind everybody, Concerts in the Park tomorrow night.
Yep. Councilmember DeRocset?
Nothing.
Ms. Dean?
Tom? Nothing to report, Mayor. Toby? Just two quick, two or three quick items. Centennial Committee continues to meet. We have a meeting tomorrow evening at five thirty here in the community center. If you're interested in the planning for the centennial efforts for next year, please feel free to show up. I sent an item to the council, and it's been circulating around, the ACE. Downtown Mesto is doing a celebration on June twenty-second for celebration of ACE coming to the area, and in addition, we are working on a plan to have a similar celebration here in series in July, most likely coordinated with our Concerts in the Park series, and most likely the last concert in the park on July twenty-fifth. That's it.
Okay, Tom?
Just want to let the council know that the Save Mart, that's under construction. They got their final sign-off for their building permit, I believe, on June twenty-eighth at nine in the morning. They're gonna have their ribbon cutting, so that project is going along very well and nearing completion.
Okay. Darrell?
Mayor, just a reminder that Fourth Street Project is underway. The road will actually be being closed down this Wednesday, so bear with us.
Great. Brendan?
I'd just like to say I'm glad to have Captain Collins back from Class Two Sixty-eight of the FBI Academy after ten weeks.
Mr. Collins, why, any, anything you want to comment on that? You happy to be back?
It's good to be back. It's a wonderful experience, but it's good to be back. Ten weeks is a long time.
Great. Brian? Tracy? Steve?
Thank you. Steve Hallam, Economic Development Manager. I just wanted to take an opportunity to remind businesses particularly to check out the city's webpage on economic development. Last week, we were profiling an event. On Wednesday, it, it was the Stenosloss County Procurement Purchasing Power Expo. It was a great opportunity for local businesses to find out about the county bidding process, how to submit successful bids, and this week, we're profiling an event that comes up on June twenty-seventh. It's sponsored by the Sierra Valley Small Business Center. It's free, and it's targeting local agricultural businesses, which includes farmers, processors, manufacturers, and it provides information on available resources to better market, distribute, sell products, as well as financing opportunities for small egg businesses.
Great, thank you. Jeremy? Supervisor DiMartini?
I have nothing.
Nothing. You look well rested. Must have been on vacation. Oh, great. All right, with that, we will move to closed session conference with labor negotiator, and public employee discipline dismissal release. Thank you.